All right, so tonight is just a work session, so this is really just an informal meeting for everyone in attendance to present your project and get some feedback from the commissioners. So that way you have a clear direction on where to go moving forward for hopefully approval next month, June 8th, the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. Otherwise, if that doesn't work, we meet the second Tuesday of every month. So yeah, so feel free to ask as many questions as you want to the commission and hopefully you'll leave feeling like you know the right direction to head with your project. So first up, we had Prospect Park, which was an Eagle Scout project. I don't see them here today, so why don't we skip that one? And we'll do the Friederich Hartman House, which is exterior alteration at 604 West Fifth Street. So if you'd like, I can do a kind of a brief introduction of the project and then the floor is yours.
Yeah, sure. That works.
Okay. So this building is located in the Hamburg Local Landmark Historic District, so that's why it comes before the board for review. Based on the inventory sheet, it was built in 1868 in a vernacular brick revival architectural style. The original owner was Friederich Hartman, who was a brick mason, so it's believed that he also constructed the building as well. And it's just a single-family home, two-story building. All right, so on your screen, you see the satellite image of the property, and the yellow box is highlighted are where the proposed work will be. So on the left side of the building, or on the left, the applicant is proposing to construct a two-story deck that will allow access from the second floor down to the ground level, and then as well as building a area of fire rescue or a balcony-type structure. On the east porch, which you can see on that elevation on the right, so they're be knocking out that window to put a door in for exterior access. So here, you can see the west elevation of the building, so there's addition block buildings, that's the sides-to-sides, the bricks, the original structure. So the proposal is to construct this deck with a staircase going down to the ground floor. So they would be punching in a new door on the addition portion of the second floor, and then converting the window in the middle there to a door for access to the deck, which would have a staircase leading down to the ground. And then here, we have that east elevation along the street frontage on that corner, so there's the existing porch. So the proposal is to take out the window and carve in a door opening, and then install railings on top of that existing porch area. So that's just kind of a brief overview, and we have the applicants here. If you guys want to introduce yourselves or provide a little bit more detail that maybe I missed.
Amy Simler, Vice President of Sales and Marketing at Bush Construction. We were honored to do the renovation at the fire station, so we presented it in this room. It feels kind of like home. But Brett has done the work, he's also a Bush Construction employee. And then Dr. Tonya, my chiropractor, that's her resident with her mother, Amelia.
Yeah. So yeah, as you can see here, you know, at this particular image, the intent of this space is just for, in case of a fire in the home, is to be able to get out on top of the existing covered porch and, you know, as it was called, an area of rescue. So it's not intended to be someplace that would be sat at, you know, or any, you know, a bunch of people to be up there, it's just for an emergency purpose only. That's the intent of this space. So it would just be railings put around there. There is a little bit of an issue with some water that kind of cools up on the patio itself, so a little bit of gutter and flashing work would have to be done along with that, but nothing that would be altering the current historic look of that. What we would be aiming to do for the replacement of the window with a door, we'd be looking for something that would be historic to match, you know, the era of the house. The heights, the one elevation where you could see the doors in the actual CAD plan, those weren't quite the height of what they're actually going to be. We intend them to be the same height as what the rest of the windows are, so maybe it'll be a taller door, or maybe it'll be a door with like a transom light over the top of it, something that's going to, you know, keep that historic look of the building itself. So is there any questions on the intent there? And we're looking at like a black metal or aluminum railing, something that's going to be not very, not going to really stand out, but just kind of be, it's more of a safety precaution for if somebody does have to get out on that particular porch roof.
Just for my background info, is the property utilized today as a single-family dwelling or is it a two-unit being utilized right now?
Single.
Single?
Okay.
So basically, how this project actually came about, you know, Dr. Tonya and her mother, they, there was a fire, how long ago was that?
There's a couple of them, but one recent one was very emotional for me because I remember waking up and there was smoke, and it was just, you know, just less than a block down in our area. And I remember getting up and running out and going, "Mom, mom," and I just, and I realized we had no way out. I thought it was our home. And so there's one inside stairwell, but there's a bed, one of the back bedrooms and then the other, it's a two-bedroom house essentially with a third bedroom. They were trying to renovate this home into a multi-dwelling, and that was the problem with all the different divisions, that they weren't completed. So when that happened, and I woke her up and we were running down the stairs, and I realized that we would have had no way out had we been sleeping and it had been our home. That was just too much for me, and I, I'm just, it was just too much to realize, so...
Has the interior of the dwelling, the floor plan been altered then in the past?
Yes, because the person, one, two, three owners ago, who I've not met, was trying to make it into a multi-dwelling.
Okay.
How large are these windows?
Oh, I do, I have them back to the office, I don't remember how wide they...
Like, are you talking the height of them, or you mean the width of the windows?
Would it qualify for an ingress egress window?
Um, I think honestly, to, I'll have to go back and look and see exactly what the code says on that, and that's, I guess that's the other thing too with how this is zoned. There, I would assume there's nothing commercial that needs to be followed since it's a residence, even though there's a business on the...
Yeah, it goes by the residential code, and there are stipulations for historic buildings if it is something that would alter its historic integrity.
Okay.
So there are some exceptions in the building code related to that.
Okay. So is that, I mean, are you saying that it's an issue to replace the window with the door, or...
I'm saying that it, I mean, the windows are kind of a bigger component of a historical home, and so knowing the size of that window would be helpful.
Sure, okay.
On making that decision for the commission, I would, I don't want to speak out of your cap, but...
These windows were previously altered.
Right, but changing it from a window to a door and kind of cutting out the lintel, you said it would be a larger change than just switching out the window itself, and so just kind of knowing how big a window we're working with.
Sure.
Especially if this is just for emergencies. And I know that Matt already talked to you about the structural integrity of that roof piece of it, the total weight of an individual.
Sure, yeah, and actually, so I have been talking with a structural engineer just on this whole project in general, just trying to figure out where supports for the porch side would actually be at, so just, we're trying to make sure that we're designing something that's going to be functional for what the main purpose, the main purpose is for, you know, an area of egress, but it's also, you know, if you're putting in something like that, you still want to be able to enjoy it, you know, if you're, you know, adding to the space like that.
Will this be on the north side of the street for review, or on the south side of the street?
Are you talking this particular?
Yeah.
This is on the east side, yep, this, southeast.
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 So it's a corner.
Yeah, okay. All right, sorry. If the egress stairwell, exterior stairwell was added on the backside, would there be a need for a front egress access?
Ideally, yes, so each, basically each bedroom has its own way to, I mean, if there is some kind of a fire or something on the west half of the home, you know, that's kind of limits how you can get out on the east half.
So I mean, if it's truly for emergency ingress egress, I would say that the size of the window, we want to take that into consideration, and I don't see a need to put a railing on it if it's truly for emergency ingress egress.
Well, I mean, let's say it's in the middle of winter and it's full of ice, somebody steps out there, they could fall right off.
Yeah, that's definitely part of the safety part. My mother is 80.
Right.
But please, you know, consider that.
Okay.
I would have to imagine, and I'm just speaking out loud without talking, I would have to imagine that there is some kind of design that if constructed correctly, you would never know if it was original or not original.
Thank you.
Now, I'm always thinking for myself, and I don't know, I mean, I've just, I haven't even driven by the property, I apologize, so I just try to get a sense of it. I don't know, interesting.
I'll do some more, I mean, now that I did realize, you know, the actual style and everything, that it was, you know, the architectural style that it was, so I can do a little bit more looking into that particular style and see, you know, I have seen, I have seen other houses before, I mean, it might not be from the same exact era, but where they do have those areas where it's just kind of a balcony area like that, that's just real, and it's right over the top of a porch or something, so that's why, that's why we're looking at some kind of like black wrought iron, something along those lines, where that seems to be something that matches closer to, you know, these older historic-type buildings. I mean, with no alterations to the deck, I mean, if you looked at the original picture that you had from the street view, to me, it doesn't look like anything's really changed on there. Maybe the gutters a little bit, but I mean, the overall deck construction, maybe the railing around the front porch, we can't tell.
Yeah, no worries. I was just kind of curious because I know that these are pretty tall windows, and so I'd be curious to see what the differential is between that and the door in terms of height.
Okay.
So if we were to find a door that fit in that exact dimension, would that be something that would be more acceptable in order to approve the project?
Well, that's up to the commission, but my feeling would be to create a larger opening than the window would probably not be the direction we want to go if we can avoid it.
Sure. Well, I believe, are you talking the width of the window itself, or, I mean, so if you were going to modify the height, you wouldn't be going higher, if anything, it might be just a little bit lower where the actual, like, the threshold of the door would be.
Right.
Which, from the street, I mean, it's very, it's kind of, to me, it's hard to really notice where that, you know, below part of the window is versus, you know, where the actual sill is sitting at right now.
Can we go back to the backside when we're done here? Once the commission, I don't know, the commission has, is anyone online, would the commission have any questions?
Can we see the slide of the railing?
Which slide? Diane, what slide do you want to see?
Oh, I want to see which slide, which shows the first drawings of the railing that is going to be up there.
So the railings that you're going to see in this drawing, those are just generic out of Revit, those, that's not exactly how they would be at all. I mean, that's just, yeah, I, so with part of this, on this design of everything, you know, there's a reason that a few of these things have not been fully vetted out, like, you know, what material we're going to exactly go with, or, you know, what the railing's exactly going to look like. We wanted to be sure that we were going to, you know, like you said, get some feedback on what was okay to use and what was not before we go through a whole pricing exercise, you know, I mean, that's a lot of our time, and, you know, it's not cost-effective for the owner to, you know, go that route.
We tried to go on the north side, and because of the, you know, the way that spacing from the other owner, that's not, then I, it's, the windows are very important to us as far as the historic nature, and so we are trying to not block any windows, and that's why it extends over, and also to allow that, that other escape there. And then we're trying to keep this so it is not visible. We're trying to make it, like, the railing very, very, just so you don't even see it, like, that's why we're trying to think black so that it won't be visible.
Something black and...
Something that is not, that the home is all you see, and I'm just noticing when I look that black would be the best, but that's, you know, obviously, that's just our thought, that, so that therefore, all you would see is the home instead of this gaudy, so that's, that's our goal, to be utilization that way, but yet to not be visible.
And one of the other options that we're looking at as well, so I don't have the support columns in there at the moment, I, this was kind of a, hey, we could throw it together after we met the last time and made some revisions, so I have to talk with our structural engineer that we've been working with, but just say, hey, where can these posts go, but we're thinking with the post that we will find some kind of a historically close brick to maybe wrap the posts, so you're not seeing treated wood, like, that's a big thing to me, if you're not seeing the treated wood, it's a lot easier to make things look more along the historic lines, and then as well, where the stairs come down and then go and return back towards the door for the house, like, maybe under there, kind of wrap, you know, kind of building that, just kind of horseshoe C shape out of the brick as well, so you're not seeing all those support posts and all that stuff, so it just kind of cleans, cleans it up a little bit.
There was a full deck on the north side of the home, which was removed when, like, as I said, I think it was four owners ago, who actually put the addition on and took out the deck.
So this, I help, I know, I've applied to this house a million times, but the backside, the back left side, is that an addition, or did the brick fall off and they put siding on?
No, they took off the deck, the full deck, and they put the addition on.
You can kind of see the difference in roof here.
So the property has been altered?
Yes.
From the original design?
Yes.
Okay.
So what's the purpose of the second door? I know you said it was a two-bedroom, so I understand, one side and the other side, that two doors?
Because still, so there's a living space in there that I actually have as a night place, so I, when I have my family members come, that's where they sleep, so I'm just, maybe call me extra cautiously paranoid, I just, I, we've actually had a few fires in our area, and it just starts to make me think, but I don't want ever having anyone be stuck up there, and so if I could just have another access to, from that area of the bedroom, it would make me feel, without having to alter, you wouldn't really be able to tell, it's just, it's just the fact that someone could open up, it would look like a window, I don't want to have any alteration other than that, I just want that person to be able to have access out.
And like with the drawing too, if you see, you know, those doors, so basically, you're going to, it looks a little bit strange, but the door's a little bit different height, you know, obviously, the window opening that was there was the full height as the other windows that you see up above, so the idea would be to have the doors all be that same type of height, and whether you just have a little transom window over top or taller doors or whatever it is, you know, that's, that would be the route that we would be looking at doing.
It's hard to see the, I guess, my thing was is, you know, usually, if it's, if it's a, probably not exposed windows, but, you know, that would be an exit route to the deck that will be there, that's why I'm thinking why the two doors might seem odd to have right next to each other, maybe look a little out of place.
Sure, yeah.
Just one, one door, and then maybe the family area would have, it would still have the window for escape.
Could you do an interior door?
I can't hear you.
Could you do a door on the inside of the building that would connect the back room to...
It's a huge brick wall.
Oh, there was a brick there.
And that's, I don't really feel comfortable taking out a huge one.
I mean, okay, let's, what if the, does it make a difference if the, instead of having the two in the middle, having the window, door, window, door instead, does, I mean, does that make it look any different to you, or, you know, would it be easier to tell if you actually saw how wood, you know, more of a...
I guess it just feels more like a, it looks like a multifamily unit than just a single-family residence.
Yeah.
That's why putting the two doors up there.
Okay.
But I, we're, my thought...
I understand your purpose, but...
My thought is to actually make it look like a window. I don't even have to, it isn't actually a foot, like, actual, like, wooden door, it can be a glass door, it can look like a window, I just want access, so...
It would actually end up looking like four windows in it.
Yes, it would look like four windows, I'm, that's fine.
So I guess, and the purpose of the work session is that we can ask dumb questions, you know, and I'm going to ask a dumb question, just, but again, so I can understand.
There's no such thing as a dumb question.
Upstairs, the floor plan has been altered, is there a kitchen up there, or was there a kitchen up there, is there, I mean, at one time, was there a kitchen, or could there be a kitchen?
There, yes, there could be a kitchen, is up to me.
So I guess my only concern on the backside of this is with the concrete lot and everything, and I don't know what it's zoned, and like, without being in front of there in the setting, if we're adding staircases and everything and we're kind of making it a functional duplex...
They can't, it's allowed to, it's CT, commercial transitional.
Yeah.
So that would be...
So it may be an allowable use, and that's fine, again, that's why I'm asking a dumb question in a work session, I just want to understand, but then, if the property's already been altered enough that it is what it is, then it is, but if we're putting back stairwells on and we're really creating a duplex when it's not a duplex and it'll turn into one because we're allowing it, then I think that's a realistic concern too, and I'm just blabbing, I just don't know.
Her chiropractic business is on the first floor, and then her mom lives at the top, and then the kitchen is that addition on the first floor. The fire hazard that they're concerned about is that there is a gas dryer upstairs that makes them nervous, like, I think that would be the only fire hazard upstairs.
And two gas, and two gas heaters.
So zoning allows linor, right?
Yeah.
But this owner is not intending to do the dual, I'm not, yeah.
So if you, if you look at how we designed it, so I talked, you know, we talked this through the last time, you know, we kind of thought, you know, hey, she thought maybe we could go out, you know, instead of having a landing there, just go out towards the street, and to me, I said, you know, that, to me, if I saw that, that says, hey, this is multifamily housing right there. So here, if we turn back and it goes right by the window, you know, it makes it more of a private thing, where it's not inviting people to go up there, and, you know, if somebody's living on the first, first floor right there, you're going to be walking through or in front of somebody's windows every single time, and it just, to me, it doesn't invite or scream out that, hey, this is multifamily, to me, it's just more, but hey, this is just a little private space here.
Like I said, I would say explore how big those windows are, because I know that they're oversized from a standard today, and see if they might qualify for an ingress egress window, because that would be the biggest hesitation in staff's mind, is cutting bigger openings and losing that shape of the original windows.
Okay.
I don't think on this side, it's that big of a deal to put in a door on the addition piece of it as much as cutting in a new door where a window used to be, so...
Okay. What is, what is an ingress egress?
It's a larger window that can be climbed in and out of in case of an emergency.
Can you explain climbed in and out of? I, this is what concerns me, I don't want my mom at 80 to worry about, so when you say climbed in and out of, what do you mean?
It's a window that's large enough for someone to go in and out of.
Like, opening, you open it up.
Okay.
Slide up.
There would be like keeping your window.
So I'm begging you, I'm begging you.
There's all different standards, there's all different standards of what defines ingress and egress to make it legal for building codes, and that's what Bush and those will help me with, and the ease of what type of product do you use is really, I mean, we're going to look at material, you know, like, you know, vinyl windows bad, you know, so we'll always be looking at materials for the product and, you know, on the exterior. Now, this is a modified dwelling, my only suggestion would be, when you look at the design, think about how you can make it better, and where people think it might have always been that way, you know, take something that's been modified poorly and it's improved, then I think that helps the neighborhood.
And so these are actually vinyl windows?
Of course they are.
Yeah, I guess one, one thing too with the, like, how the stairs are positioned now and, you know, with the railing, so if that's against the building and, you know, partly attached to it, and you have the brick around there, there's kind of some unused space there at the, you know, right now, on that part of the building, just kind of empty, so it almost, it almost, if you look at it, like, man, were there windows there before? Did they fill those in? So, I mean, to me, adding something to that space in general, you know, that kind of does something for it.
Yeah, I, to me, the deck itself's not a problem, it's just the, the windows.
Okay.
Can I clarify, so if you have a window, a door that looks like a window, is that what you're saying is okay, so that...
No, it's actually cutting a larger opening in the window and losing the lintel, that's part of the architectural feature of the building, and so I would just ask that you at least explore the option, because I don't know how far off the floor the windows are, so just, I would say at least look at it as an option to see if you really truly need to have that door cut into the wall on both this side and the other side.
Does anyone else from the commission have any questions, if listening at home or online? Steph, do you have any other questions for the petitioner?
So I think what to resubmit to us would be the mentions and materials of the existing as well as the proposed.
Sure.
As well as the type of railing treatments and structural support treatments that you'll be in.
Okay. Is there any materials in general, like, just, let's just talk about the deck itself here, is there anything that says, do not do that?
Generally, we try to stay away from pressure-treated lumber as exposed material.
We have seen that.
Usually, if there's lumber, it's painted, or like you were saying, the black look, be okay. Basically, historically sympathetic, like, it doesn't look like it shouldn't be there.
Okay.
It doesn't need to match 100%, but it looks like it belongs.
Do you feel like you have enough information to...
I think so.
...move forward and...
You can always contact Matt if, as you're exploring your options.
Yeah, I'll, that's one of the first things I'll do, is I'll look into the window sizes and all that, and kind of see what kind of options that we do have out there, and say, hey, this is what we're looking at, what do you think? Kind of go from there.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Monroe Parker. Sure, so just a follow-up on the April work session, plans that came before was the reconstruction of the east porch elevation. Laura, myself, and all other personnel who got in, met with the contractor at the property just to see what the condition of the porch was. We recommended that he hire a local experienced architect to help with the project, which he has. He's also been in contact with the alumni ownership group that owns the property, and they're explaining options for potentially doing historic tax credits. So that's an item that East Porch, that will come back to the commission at some time, probably this summer, maybe for another work session before plans are formally drawn. The main item for tonight, though, in terms of this house, let's see if I can pull it up. Is, um, the masonry work that's proposed on the building. So the scope of the project would be to tuck point the entire masonry brick, brick exterior, all four sides, uh, and then replace deteriorated brick as needed. So, uh, I've met with Ezekiel on the site, we've toured the, uh, masonry work. Um, it's estimated that about twelve hundred bricks will need to be repre, replaced from the building. So they're here to get feedback on what type of brick would be closest to that historic looking character. And then, um, once when that's done, the masonry would be clean, with your clean six hundred detergent. So included, I just have some photos, um, of the building as you walk around there, portions that are, you know, pretty rough or almost an entire section of the building will be replaced. So on the picture on the right, you see the four windows on the left, almost that entire area would need to be replaced, 'cause that brick is very deteriorated. So this is, um, the closest brick that the contractor was able to find that most closely resembled, um, the existing brick on the building. It's a red brick with similar dimensions, but, um, we'll need to see, um, exact dimensions too for, for our next, uh, meeting and final approval. So you can see it just has, how it compares to the building, uh, to the brick around it. Uh, so Ezekiel was explaining to me, so if you look at the picture on the right, I believe, as you go, like, along that bottom row, like, those bricks would probably stay, but areas where you see those giant dents and crumbling, those are the bricks that would be replaced. So it's really gonna be kind of, as they're out there in the field going, it's, okay, this one looks good, but this one needs to come out. Um, really kind of on the fly, as you're out there in the field, you'll get that confirmation. So, yeah, so we just have some more photos of the exterior. So a portion of the building did already have brick replacement and tuck point. So the photo on the left, you can see the portion of the building that was replaced with new brick. And then you could also see in comparison to the original brick. And then the photo on the right is that proposed brick that we had in the building and how that looks with the replacement brick, just to give you a sense. And then, uh, along with the brick replacement is the tuck point. Uh, Ezekiel had in mind, um, a type O mortar mix, which I thought would be more appropriate for the historic, um, building. So that's just an example of a small section that was tuck pointed in that mix, and how the brick would look, um, with that. And there were also were portions of the building, uh, select sections that were tuck pointed in the past with type N mortar mix. So the purpose of today is to, you know, kind of give direction on what do we think about that brick sample and the mortar.
How long ago was the other part replaced, do you know?
We don't know.
You don't know, I mean, I'm just curious as to how that has deteriorated, you know, the color, it matches pretty well, so...
Does the city have any records on that?
I don't, I don't know, we would, um, we can, we can take a look. Just so, um, there, there are different styles to mortar application as well. So if you can kind of see, this one kind of is a difference, the original mortar is a different style of application, um, than what was on the, the brick replacement before as well. So the, the joints are different, and so that would be something else that would need to be discussed, um, on, on how that profile of the brick itself should look. Do you, Ezekiel, did you do an actual...
Yeah, I got Dave with me, sorry about that.
He's gonna do a tuckie now.
Was there an actual mortar analysis report?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and, uh, just let me back up a bit, okay?
Maybe you should talk really loud so the people...
Okay.
Okay, I'm here.
Uh, can everybody hear me? All right, I'll try and speak up. So, uh, what's happened with this house has been several things. Uh, in addition to the brick replacement, the house has been sandblasted, and that's why you have the rough texture of the brick. And that's why you have spalling of the brick, which is what's happening here. And, uh, this is an ongoing condition, it's not going to end, uh, unless we, uh, take, uh, certain actions, okay? So one of the things, of course, is we're gonna replace the bricks, and in replacing the bricks, we need to match the original mortar. And in, uh, eighteen fifty-five, they did not use type O mortar, okay? The analysis showed very conclusively, they were talking about a lime putty mortar, which is very different than a type O mortar. We have a sand sample, uh, that we can match. Now, the thing is, that this house was built with the best quality materials of its day, and it should've never been sandblasted, but it was, and that's what we had the problems. So, uh, concerning the joints, uh, they relate up with extremely narrow joints, much narrower than normal. And what you see in the left photograph is the type O mortar mix. Uh, the reason it's so obvious, and this is true with the addition, uh, uh, the wing, uh, replacement brick, is when they cut out the mortar joints, they widened the joints. So from going to about a sixteenth inch, they went to about a quarter inch mortar joints. Okay, I'm gonna work with Ezekiel to make sure we don't have this issue, so that the mortar joints will be the same thickness as the original. And we are not going to, at least, I'm not going to recommend, um, repointing the entire building. The joints are sound, uh, there's nothing wrong with the mortar, what's wrong is the, a spalling and, and deteriorated brick. So in taking out the bricks, we're going to replace the bricks and use it, uh, uh, a lime putty mortar, uh, keeping the same joint, joint, joint thickness. Now, the problem with the original mortar is that it was white, very white. And so when the work is done, uh, we can leave the mortar white and let it naturally, uh, darken, or we can go back and darken it to, to blend with it. So my goal, and I believe Ezekiel's with me on this, is that when it's all said and done, people will look at the house and say, wow, somebody did a terrible job replacing those bricks on the wing, and it's, you know, it's wonderful that the, the main part has survived with, without any problems, okay? So, that's my goal, okay?
Thank you for that extra information, I appreciate that.
And one thing I would recommend, uh, uh, I don't recommend necessarily cleaning the brick, the, the dirt on the brick isn't causing any problems. But I do recommend, uh, using a non-succinyl, uh, uh, water repellent. Because right now, the bricks are like sponges, and they're absorbing water, causing the spalling. Uh, water repellent will allow moisture in the wall cavity to escape, but repel water from going in, and that will prolong the life of the bricks.
Perfect.
Is the majority of the replacement in those two areas, like one with all the windows and this one here?
They're all, the bricks are all over, okay? Yeah, now, it's, the problem has been, you know, they sandblasted, and now the bricks are, you know, reaching a point where they're here and there, it's like, like measles.
So are you still estimating the twelve hundred bricks replaced, or can you save them with...
Around there.
Okay.
Yeah, it can be, it can be more or less, but, you know, I'll, I'll let you know.
Right, I'll send it out.
Yeah.
And this, this project is only with bricks, not with any of the stone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, your name again was?
David Arbogas.
B, right, and you did the mortar analysis.
Correct.
No, for, for, no, for full disclosure, especially to the committee, David has done work for me before on my apartments, and, and, um, so, and, Alderwoman McGinnis, before she was an Alderwoman, helped me on one of mine, so I wanna make sure the petitioners know, um, that I've used both of their services before. I, I never told you to go to them, but I think you were very smart in doing so.
Thank you.
And my suggestion is as amazing, if you can figure this out, you're gonna have a great career.
Yeah, thank you.
Because there's not a lot of masons trusted that, that really know how to do this.
No, that's why I, I came last time, and I was like, I thought I was gonna freeze, but thank God I didn't, and, um, that's why I looked in around, and then they gave me his number, and it was awesome. He came in there, and then I, he explained everything to me, and like I told you guys, I do everything by the book. If you guys don't like it like that, I do it how, the way you guys like it.
Does, um, does anyone from the committee, listening at home, does anyone have any questions?
Um, I do, and I apologize for not, not being a real problem, but, uh, hearing everything, so let's take something that's possible. Um, I have a question about the, as you can see on the picture there, is anything you'd like to, you know, try to announce that, no?
Oh, yes, um, okay, when it's all said and done, the joints will be the same width. What we're seeing in the picture, the joints are wider than the original width, okay? So we're not going to widen the joints, number one. Number two, although the replacement mortar is going to be white like that, we can go back and darken the joints to blend with the dark, dark joints of the original.
Okay, thank you very much. You're the one that I can hear.
Oh, good.
Yeah, just walking around.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else from the commission that has questions?
I have a question. Um, I'm also having a really hard time hearing, but the last person that was talking, I could hear them just fine, so, again, if I'm asking a question about something that was already done, I'm sorry. But, um, are you gonna use new bricks to replace those, or will you use old bricks?
Uh, they are new bricks, uh, simply because a lot of times, if there's not a lot of damage, we can locate enough old bricks that it's not a problem. In this case, uh, the bricks, there's twelve hundred bricks, so we're better off using new bricks.
Okay, and then that will look okay, it won't look too new?
No, it won't look new, it won't look like, hopefully, it won't look like what was done on the rear, which is very visible.
Is this proposed brick the same dimension?
These bricks will be the same dimension as the original, yeah.
The older pair, was that old or new brick, do you know? Would you tell by looking at that?
It looks like new brick that they replaced, yeah.
No, they, those were new bricks, you know.
They used like a rougher texture and more sand brick that it didn't match at all.
Yeah, these, these, the original bricks are what we call pressed, hydraulic press bricks. And they were made in a metal form, and they had a hydraulic press that compressed the clay and made an extremely dense, hard brick. They were typically used in paving, and they're incredibly durable bricks, unless you sandblast them.
Okay, okay, um, staff, do you have any questions? Does the petitioners have any questions at all right now? I guess the other question I have is, does the ownership group feel that they understand the resources for tax credits and other opportunities that they may have or need to take on such a project, and is there anything the city can do to assist in that understanding? Because this is a very significant property, and when this first came, I told staff, you know, we have a brand-new commission, so I called a few people just to make sure that we were all on the same page, to work together to help the ownership group. So I just wanna make sure the ownership group, um, has the resources needed, because this is very important to the city that it's done right, I believe.
Just, so, gotta speak, that's why we were talking to Dave, um, there's also like the stone that needs to be worked on and stuff, but I told Dave that right now, they, they only have the funds to do masonry work on the top, so, yeah.
Yeah, so we did reach out to the state historic preservation office, I'll talk louder, and I'll stand. Uh, so we did send some information to Casey Haas, who was our main contact, to pass on to the ownership group. Um, so they have the full litany of their options in terms of, um, resources, from the historic preservation tax credits to grant programs. Um, I don't know if we included the urban revitalization tax exemption program, but that's on the backend, it won't help finance it, it's more of a, um, tax exemption on the backend, uh, if once the work's completed. Uh, so we did send off that information.
Very good. Anybody else from the commission?
Yeah, I'd like to leave some other question. Um, is, I think that we're in a historical consultant, is it all?
Uh, she asked if there was a historic consultant involved. Um, Casey, the contractor, has contacted, uh, John, well, the, what?
John Man, or John, yeah, attacked, it's John Man.
John Dan.
Right, no, of course that is.
And then Dave, so they, they, they aren't in contact with consultants, uh, now, that they are working with them.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you got Dave.
No, thank you.
I really am.
Well, I'm, I'm excited about this job, because I've watched it decay over the past thirty years, and it's time, the work is done right.
I just thought, oh, no, not on our watch. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll be watching. All right.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to just kind of give a quick overview now of the, of the Eagle Scout project, before we head on with the presentation?
Have you seen the green, uh, paint?
I haven't gone in and, and, and looked at it yet.
Yeah, you did a nice job.
Good.
One more. Okay, so, last meeting, we had a boy scout show up, who was proposing to do an Eagle Scout project at Prospect Park. So his intention was to install a park bench, or park furniture, um, on the upper portion of Prospect Park. So staff had been communicating with him, I don't believe, obviously, he's not here in the room, but I don't see him online either, so I'm not sure what happened, but hopefully, he's still interested. But, um, after last meeting, we recommended that he go out there, see what the existing furniture looks like, and try to find furniture that's comparable to that. So these photos on the right just show you what the existing benches are, which is like a black metal material, matching garbage cans, and then even the drinking fountain is painted black as well. So I know he had stated in his application, he would install, um, a table and two benches, or a seating area underneath the light posts, which I think is between kind of the red and yellowish tree there. And then if you wanna go one more side more. They were able to find a manufacturer that produces, um, if not the exact same style, a very close style to that. And then I know over the weekend, he, uh, went to the neighborhood and knocked on doors. Uh, we passed along contact information for Judy Belper, who's the founder of Friends of Prospect Park, so I know that they talked. Yeah, I wish she was here to say more, so I'll follow up with them tomorrow, and we'll see if he's still interested in the project, um, so, you know, he, maybe... Oh, yeah?
Uh, in my, more about today, there was a paper from the gap, okay, one, and the, good more information.
Uh, sure, if you have any additional information.
Yeah, we have six of them.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just feeling a little awkward here. I think this information, but I don't, I don't want to be transparent.
Okay, Diane's saying that, um, she got a pamphlet from the Boy Scouts, so I think when he went around the neighborhood, he dropped flyers in of all the mailboxes. Um, Diane said that she does live across the street, so she wants to make sure that she's transparent. Doesn't that, she's not, uh, got any conflict or interest. Yeah, yeah, thank you for sharing.
Hi, we, we went to the other building.
Oh, no problem.
And the woman there said, oh, the meeting ended. They only lasted ten minutes and they canceled.
You're fine, don't worry about it.
So we're like, okay, so we went home thinking it would've been nice to get it now. We got all the way home and my husband says, no, I think they moved it to the police department.
You're fine. Take a breath.
Did I help you?
And just to remind you, this is a work session. It's not formal. It's, for us is to ask questions and make sure we understand and make sure everyone's on the same page. So does it matter that you're, everything's good?
You're fine.
We're fine.
Unless she would've walked out the door before we got here.
I mean, we went all the way from our house, all the way down here. I was standing at that door at five o'clock and all these people were leaving. By fifteen, I'm like, they, you know, it'll take them at least half hour to get through the regular part. We go, we go in, there's a woman there, she says, oh, yeah, they all just left. They said it was canceled. What?
Please enter your access code.
Okay. We go all the way home, my husband's like, oh, no. And then you can't imagine all the construction we hit between.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Where we are. Now, ma'am, my husband sent another picture too. Did you see that one that he sent you? What the square, a square, or no, you just, you just sent it, right?
Yeah. It was sent this afternoon. I might add a...
Yeah, there's a similar one that's similar to this, but it's a square with four chairs, with four benches on each side. Has a different, kind of more like a game table look than a picnic table.
Yeah, the phone's working. Okay, so we just kind of gave a recap of, um, where, where, that you went around and talked to the neighbors and, um, that this was, is this still the style that you're thinking about?
It's the same style and company and such, but it may not be a table and two benches. It would be one, it's basically like one table in the middle and then connected to it are two chairs.
Okay, so kind of...
I just sent them a note. Do you need, can I, is there a way I can get you a note or?
I've been having technical difficulties all day.
If you have extra copies of what you...
Well, it's not the, the...
I know, but you could, you could give it to these folks, the copy of what you took to the, um, neighbors.
It's, staff have already given out.
I don't think yours had that other vision, that other picture of the bench. When we were here a month ago of the new bench. So that bench you see there, that's, that's the exact company that makes all the other benches that are up there.
All of the other, uh, that's right.
Did you want a copy of the, what he handed to the neighbors?
Well, let him go here in a second. Well, I'm, uh... Oh, you're, don't worry about it, you're good.
Apparently the keyboard stopped working. Sorry, Dan.
Can they hear us?
I love technology.
Can they, can they hear us at home?
I don't, I think they could when I call staff in.
So with my keyboard, sometimes there's a little pen thing in the back that you push a little...
It's, it's a...
Oh, there you go.
Oh, my gosh. This is exactly, you have extra tea in there though. Okay, it's working. I'm sorry, I'm still here. Sorry.
This was just one of the other, uh, when we went to the tomorrow website, they had a bunch of different options and this was one of the, this is what I originally had kind of envisioned was, uh... There you go.
Okay.
So, uh, because it, my whole idea was that people could go play board games and this has a game board built into it, so I thought that this, this was another, uh, idea that I saw. I didn't know they had, uh, and then they have multiple different post options as well. Uh, all of them are, all the other ones up there are, uh, just on concrete slabs that they are bolted into. Uh, this one had, just has the, just like one anchor that it would be posted to. They have, there's a bunch of different variations and such that they have for it. I think there's at least three or four where you can change how many seats, how many, what is on the top, if there is a game table, such like that. I thought that would be a... That kind of makes more sense for what I wanted to do originally, which was allow people to come and enjoy the piece and then play, uh, play a board game or something and enjoy it. And then, uh, over the weekend, I went around to the neighbors, uh, asking. And I, I, I got very few responses. I did go out a weird hour and it was also Mother's Day, so...
We always thought they'd be home. You know, it was like late, like five thirty.
Something like that. We got one response, uh, from Judith Belfer, uh, on Prospect Drive. I believe she is the founder of the Friends of Prospect Park. She gave me some very helpful feedback. She explained that some of the problems that the park currently has, uh, one being that they have a lot of garbage and that if I were to put a table up there, it'd attract a lot more people to bring food, eat food and then leave said garbage there. She explained to me that she and one week picked up about thirty pounds of garbage and I, I...
Well, she said that was under.
That was under, but that's also directly below right there, so... But a point she brought up to me was that there is no sign nor postage to show where the, what the park is and what meaning it has. And, uh, and there's no signage for the warehouse as well. But that was just some community feedback that I, if you want.
At this aerial, is this the location pretty much?
Uh, no, it'd be kind of to the bottom left there, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Like where those trees are at the top of the hill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I have a... It's on one of these sheets, I apologize.
All right, guys, have any feedback, okay?
Do you, you want to, he's got a picture of where it is. Here, I'll hand you that. That'll be your basic assistant here.
Thank you.
I only have a few of these, so you're fine.
Sure.
Yeah, so there's a picture of the actual, has the benches, what they kind of look like.
Thank you.
Good for you for door knocking. I think that's really important, um, to get feedback from the neighbors. Staff? Any questions?
I think we're just looking for the commissioners to, um, just provide feedback on whether or not you like the style of the bench and if you think it's compatible with the park.
I, I, most of the other ones are in the same style over and so I hope so.
I mean, it's the same company.
Yes, it, uh, it's, they do all the, they do all the benches downtown for some of the cities, for the city as well. But if it, if it doesn't fit, it is...
I, I, I want to thank you, Gabe, for all the hard work you did since the last meeting. Uh, I can, I can tell that you've put a lot of, of thought into it and gone over and looked at the park to see what was already there. And I know it's not always very exciting to go and knock on doors randomly, so, um, good, good for you for doing that. Um, I, I think that this is in a good place, uh, from, from at least, uh, my, my area, the staff.
I mean, I think it's sad that, you know, there is trash, but it is a park and I think people should enjoy it and I mean, maybe, maybe we need another garbage can. I don't know whether to use it or not, but I do think it's a great idea.
There's quite a few garbage cans.
Quite a few garb, that trash she said she picked up was really on River Drive, which was below?
Right.
I guess I, I'm gonna ask a question because I don't understand. So this woman is in charge of the Friends of...
Prospect Park.
Yeah, so... How does that determine whether or not a bench, a picnic table can go in there or not?
It, it's just feedback. Um, the, the commission will have the final say on, on all of it.
And then ultimately the council, I'm sure, or is it just us?
Just you guys, you, you and the Parks Department.
Okay, in the parks.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we encourage, um, not getting on doors. Uh, one, because the neighborhood has a, has a built-in relationship to the park. Secondly, uh, it builds character, I believe. I ran for office, I ran for office and you knock on doors and I think it's a great character building. Um, especially when it's for a project like this. Um, I think it's really good to do. And the worst thing we would want is to surprise the neighbors.
Yeah.
Uh, because that's not the whole point. The, the, the park ties the neighborhood and the community together and we want to make sure that the project does that as well. And then that's the most important thing.
Enjoy it, yeah.
Yeah, and good for you for knocking on doors. A lot of people wouldn't do that. That's really good.
But this is black in color, correct, like the other pictures of the furniture that were there?
Yeah, they're all, it's all, uh, it's like a, I don't know, I don't know.
You know, it's kind of, if you look at it, they're all over town.
Right, no, I'm just asking if someone...
It'd be exact, it'd be, look exactly like that. It, I mean, it'd be a different shape, but it'd be the exact same style as that.
There's some benches down along the bike path also, down below there on the other side of River Drive that are similar to those also.
I think it's a standard look that the city must use, regardless if it's a historic park or not, is what I'm guessing.
Anything else, commissioners?
No, they put Pokemon Go out there. They have a million cars up there all day long.
You thought about that, boy? And they said there was a lot of garbage generated already if you did that.
Right. Random beer park is overwhelmed, but that's, that's, it's great to have people in the park. It'd be nice if they walked.
I mean, but they were there that night even, I think. My husband and Dave said there was some people on a picnic blanket sitting there enjoying the park and there's a couple other people in cars there.
All right, is anyone else from the commission have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Parks Commission might want to help with that, Gabe, and I appreciate you having the great, the D and L which projects that can benefit the community. But the Parks Commission, I know, is the operator, is considering a couple of the trees that would be...
There has been one that's been taken.
On site with the table and bench. And, um, you know, it just, it's quite a set where they, with one of located. They might want to be in common center, let's say, or maybe HPC staff get some details on that that would help you. The light pole, I think, is located near that light pole, I imagine, would stay because it has also some security cameras on it. But there is a very large tree and then there's two small pine trees that I'm sure are all extended. This might be, that might be cut down, so you may want to reconsider to the other side of the park. It would just be a question you'd want to ask them.
So that's Betsy Tuggs with the Parks and Rec Department. I think that was your orig, your original contact with Betsy. So if, I would reach back out to her and, and ask, uh, if they have plans on, on cutting any of those trees down?
Uh, I did go up there this weekend. They actually have cut one of them now.
One of them have, okay.
It was the, kind of, it was the bottom left most tree, I guess is the best way to say it. Uh, yeah.
One of these ones?
Yeah, one of those, yeah.
Okay, um, so I guess, Gabe, where, where we're at, if you finalize, uh, which bench you're, you're looking at, if it's a table bench combo or separate benches with a table?
I'm also just trying to think there.
And then where you want to have it, um, I think that we're in a fairly good place to improve in June or have it go to consideration in June.
I'm just trying to not have to do a whole, uh, concrete slab for the bench and tables because I feel like that may be unnecessary.
Yeah, that's fair.
Betsy's looking at the pedestal ones because there's a little lack of a footprint.
Yeah, it could be covered with more, like, I, I think you guys recommended that last time.
Yeah.
All right.
We'll coordinate a little bit with that and on the trees with Betsy and I think, um, once we get just the final location and, and if, if that's the, um, the one you just emailed Matt, if that's what we're gonna go with, um, we can put that on the agenda for June.
Great. All righty.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for serving, uh, your city, Dan Port. We appreciate it.
And, and try to...
Thanks for getting here. Don't give it up. Appreciate it. All right. Well, we got one more item, I think, don't we?
Yes, we have a couple. You guys can go first. We'll make your presentation show. So you guys have a very...
I'll bring this over here. I don't want to turn it, I'm afraid. I turned it off last time, so it'll be right there. So, um, happy Historic Preservation Month to everybody. The, the Hiller, uh, house is not in your purview. Um, and it is not a locally, it's not a local landmark, it's not in a local district, but it's an important building and we know people have been concerned about it. And out of respect, uh, for what you guys do, we thought you might have an interest and we, uh, I'm marrying, again, as I'm, um, I happen to be the third ward all room, but I'm also, I do historic, uh, preservation projects, tax credit projects. This is Jamie LaCandro who owns the building. And, um, so we wanted to, to share with you, we're trying to make this a very public process with the Hiller Building. It's very prominent, it's very important, uh, for a lot of reasons and it's, um, has some real issues with part of the wall. And so we wanted to share that with you and this while we're here tonight, so thanks for allowing us. I'm gonna kind of start with history and then Jamie will do the, go into what we're gonna, what you're gonna be seeing immediately. It's, it'll get very dramatic in the long, so, okay. So just a little history. Uh, it began as the three-bay home of Stonemason John Hiller. Um, it expanded to an apartment building twice. It's two different expansions. Um, John Hiller, uh, lived in this house, built it, uh, he lived in it until he died in eighteen ninety-three with his tenants. He never moved out. This man, um, helped build the first bridge across the Mississippi, uh, the Clock Tower Building, the Arsenal, many commercial buildings, the ecclesiastical buildings across the city, but left a very small, uh, historical footprint in English language at least. I don't speak German, so maybe it's in German, but very tiny footprint. So, uh, just a little bit of the mystery of this house. So after much looking at this and looking inside... So after much looking at this and looking inside, what, and working with Dave Cordes, who some of you may know, talking to him a lot, then we think the middle section was actually John Hiller's house, a little three-bay house. We're not sure where the door was, but there is a parapet wall that was right down on, on the right side of that south doorway. And we believe that was the first, so 1852, so this is a pre-bridge across the Mississippi building. It is very, very old and there's very little of this kind of, of this age left. Then, we believe about 1857, he built the south portion. And then the final portion, which we're more sure about the date, is 1867, and we believe he built that last. It is the fanciest, so this house, if you look across, it doesn't look the same all the way down. When your eye looks at it, you start to see different kinds of windows and you start to see different things inside as well. So it, it didn't start as this building, it was really very different. And, and our, and our suspicions are kind of backed up by early addresses as well. So there is a parapet, there is a solid 15-inch brick wall, there are 15-inch solid brick walls on each end. There's one there where the parapet in the middle, sort of in the middle is. There's another 15-inch brick wall just to the right of that south door that is, goes all the way up. So that doorway into that apartment is 15 inches deep, a big clue. And so that's part of our evidence there. We believe that it was always parched, which you can't see so well in this picture, but the parging on the end of the building. And actually, Dave RVS came out and did a mortar analysis. And we found an area of deteriorated paring, which isn't hard to do in this building right now. And there was, the original paring was more of a softer sand mixture. And you can actually, it's like looking at sedimentary rock, you can see the, the layer and, and then you see this. The, so you can keep going, I'm sorry. So then the photograph you see, this was, it's not from the 60s, this building was not painted. You can see a little bit of the paring there, it was not painted. It, I came home from day about, I don't know, 2006 from work and somebody had spray painted it the awful color it is right now. I don't know what he was thinking, but, but, in any case, but it had stayed unparched until, and there's a 2004 photo, which you saw on the first slide, that was actually of it unpainted at that point. We'll go on to the next slide. So it was owned by the Hiller family until about 1900. And then the Schip family bought it and it stayed in the Schip family for much of the 20th century. It was in their family when it was listed in the National Register, it was first listed as individually listed in the National Register. And then when he did the Wester Historic District, it was listed as a contributing structure. They did pass through a series of honors in the 1980s. In 19, about 2017, it was nuisance surveyed by the City of Davenport. There had been an increasing issue with a parapet and, and so Jamie purchased it in the summer of 2020. So, but that's it in 1900. So 75 foot long stone body running north-south. There are those three little extensions on the end, they were present in this 1886 sandstone mount. That center extension on the back is timber. The south extension there, and they're all different sizes, has all stone walls all the way around. The one on the north side of the building has stone wall on the north and brick, oh, and brick walls on the back. And so there's all different kinds of construction in this building, which is not necessarily what you, you know, expect. The kitchens are located in the extensions. So you see there aren't, there's eight apartments, but there's only six extensions. So a couple of them are basically two-room apartments with a kitchen in, in the back. And so the layouts of their eight, two or three-bedroom apartments on floors one and two, there are two basement apartments. Generally, they're pretty much an original layout. There was some subdivision of the building, there's more people living in it than there was in 1900. But there's, I expected sleeping rooms, the first time I went in this building, giving a start to the history. There are two staircases with original, a lot of original stuff in them and with entrances on both sides. The basement units are entered through the door. And if you look at the layout, you'll see, if you ever come in, we'd love to do a tour sometime. In the center part, what we think the oldest part, we have the square lentils over the headers and the doors and the windows. And then in the other two, you have these, these pedimented window lentils, which look fancier, but they're actually simpler to make than the two-part ones. And that's older, the square cross is older. And so they're very deep window wells, which is kind of, makes this a very interesting building. It's very simple, nice-sized rooms, but, you know, a simple building indeed. So, and so now Jamie's gonna talk about the issues we're having and what we're planning to do.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. Now, this, this building would be, I don't know, I, I would imagine at this point, almost demoed. It was actually on the city's demo list for a while, but because of Alderman McGinnis and her plans, we were able to get with the building inspector and work out a plan that everybody agreed on. So that we can address the immediate issues and sort of stabilize the building and sort of go from there. She actually has, because of all the work that she's done and she's being incredibly modest, she's spent years on this place and has got it as, on Iowa's Most Endangered Buildings List, I think it's number six?
It was, yeah, it was twelve years ago.
Yeah, yep, yep. So we've been fortunate enough to, you know, work with engineer at this point. And we finally found a masonry company that knows what they're doing, is historically SHPO-approved and is not booked out until 2035. So the, I think the worst is on the south wall. There's severe bowing. Just to give you a little bit more frank reference, on the south wall, that's closest to where the Gateway Pub currently is. And so that's obviously a safety issue. Bricks and stones and everything obviously is a real safety hazard. So what she was saying before with the paint locking in, a lot of that moisture is probably what hurt this building and kind of made it start going south quickly. So that's, that's the biggest one that we need to, I think, address right away. So that's gonna be, this summer's gonna be the very first part of it. So if you see on where that circle is, so you can see how that kind of started declining there. Now we're gonna need a lot of patching and paring start going forward. If you can hit the next one. Thanks. So the southeast corner, you can see where that temporarily is blocked up. I was actually showing a contractor the place, walking him around. And while we were standing, three feet away from there, two limestones fell out of it. So it's only getting worse. That's a temporary sort of block up. And as we work on that southeast elevation, that's gonna be one of the things that, of course, is gonna get addressed and will get rebuilt to what it needs to be, to be historically accurate. So this next one, the damage on the east wall, you can really start to see how these super-thick walls kind of start falling apart there. And that's, I mean, we're talking, what do you think that ceiling is, seven, eight? Some, you mean even 10 feet?
Yeah, it's about 10-foot ceiling.
Yeah, so, so to have eight feet worth of damage, that's just limestone and brick and mortar is just completely deteriorated following around it. So repoint and repair the southeast corner of that east elevation is the, I think, one of the most important parts there. So where, and that's for reference where that window was temporarily breached up as well. It's like we had talked about with the paint having a lot of that moisture and you can see on those studs there how a lot of water damage has been suffered through it. So we had to pull a lot of that plaster off just so we can even assess how bad it was. So of course, that'll all get restored, you know, historically and approved through SHPO. But just to even get into it was, was a lot of work. So stabilize in the building, start the parapet. So what we're gonna do is remove the brick that needs to be removed in the stone. So, and it's gonna go about the second floor window sills. Because that's kind of where it starts to stabilize back out and that building actually is pretty solid from there, for most part. It's gonna get rebuilt with concrete block. And when we reparge it, it's gonna be in concrete. What we're going for is the original look to it. So try to historically get it back to, you know, what it once was and its form of glory. I think that 2004 picture is probably about as close. I, I think it looks gorgeous in that picture, personal opinion. So as much as I wish it was only the south wall in that southeast corner, there's also the west elevation. So it's gonna require from the roof line, removing the stone and rebuilding in a similar fashion. We'll be able to finish this and that salvaged stone. So again, trying to keep as much of that look as absolutely possible. So what we talked about with the original layouts, we're pretty fortunate that we're gonna be able to keep a lot of these exactly as is. Really, the only thing that we're gonna be wanting to do is restore it even further back to what it was. You know, opening up some entrances that had been closed off. I, I don't know what they were thinking as the years had gone by, but it almost made it harder to navigate through the building. I mean, in far as it drives me insane, you have to walk through somebody's bedroom to get to a bathroom when they had originally designed it so that you didn't have to. So gonna be going for more of that original layout. The ceiling tiles, those are more really in the basement. So I think, you know, removing those, getting everything back to that drywall plaster sort of look. And really, the interior walls throughout the apartments, I think, are pretty good. You know, it's got a lot of paint that's gonna need to be scraped off. But the walls themselves on the interior are actually pretty solid. So install new windows, they're gonna be the wooden ones, what I've found works, at least. Best so far for me is the wooden ones that the exterior is sort of wrapped in that aluminum. I think HPC would probably be okay with. The vinyl windows that are there are gonna absolutely have to go. They're horrible condition as, you know, vinyl windows tend to do after a few years. All the mechanical is completely shot. So the plumbing, maybe some of the electrical isn't completely gone. But for all the scope work we're gonna have to do, all that stuff is probably gonna have to be brand-new. So in addition to it, sprinkler system, I don't have it listed on there. But with a sprinkler system, the additional fire safety, the fire horns, and making sure that all gets proved by Davenport Fire Department. So with the historic look, everything plumbing, sprinklers, all that stuff needs to be run into closed offices so you don't have the exposed pipes. So I, I guess sort of touching back up again, the exterior masonry, where it's gonna need, you know, the, a little bit of the tug pointing, the repair, we're all gonna get all that done. And again, like David had mentioned earlier, using a gentle means of removing that horrifying ornament that might still happen to be there, not sandblasting it, not pressure washing it. So, but trying to remove as much of that that you can in incredibly gentle fashion. So, or paying that parched walls, and I, I've said it a few times already, but so we can get back to that sort of natural, original, historic gray. I think this 2004 picture that's colorized probably does it the most justice for what we're going for.
What's your timeframe on what you hope to be completion?
I mean, I would say at, at least a year. So with just the.
I would think more than that.
Yeah, with the masonry alone, where they talked, three months?
Yeah, they, they'll start, they can't start till August, probably in their schedule, so.
So this is, this is not in a federal district or?
It's in a national district.
National district?
Yeah. And so it's not under your purview, but it's part of the downtown, it would get a formal approval from the Designer Board. But generally speaking, if, with a project like this, it's just gonna defer to SHPO. So it's more of a formal.
And we're doing historic tax credits, so all of that will have to be, and then I have been in contact with SHPO. We got a small HDP grant, I'm going for a bigger one as the scope, the, just to, and I'm not, you know, the scope of work on the work, they didn't even bid doing it all in stone, the scope of the work on these three walls is over, is $330,000, is more than $330,000. Just to do that little bit, not all the other stuff, just to repick, just the masonry.
Before you're getting into the apartments?
For getting into the apartments. So it is a very expensive procedure and so, so it, but SHPO will, I've been in contact with SHPO through this process. This is the sort of the second start at doing this. The first one was sort of a stopgap measure that honestly didn't make a lot of sense and got stranger as, as, as it went on and. So we're working with Renaissance Restoration out of Galena. There's not a lot of expertise in repairing large stone buildings in Davenport. They work in Davenport, but these folks have many, many decades of it. So I'm feeling much more comfortable and, you know, it was horrible to have to remove all the plaster on the, on the east walls. It was very solid in the basement and the first floor, but they had to to see the condition. And they're gonna completely repoint that whole wall. So that's part of getting, making sure that the wall, just, we wanted to do work that was gonna last for the next, you know, 50, 60 years. So, and now they will repoint all of that wall, which of course they couldn't have done with plaster because the lime putty just evaporates after a while, so.
Is there anyone else from the commission that has any questions?
I'd just like to congratulate you for making all this possible.
Oh, yeah, no, thanks. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be here at Alderman Day without a, all the guests. Really, I think, I think all the credit goes to her.
And we'd love to come back with you guys and give you progress updates if you're interested in a tour. You know, take you through, really wanna engage the public, which doesn't happen with a lot of these projects. So we wanna do Facebook and other things that sort of keep people engaged in the purpose and what's going on here.
I'd talk about your window selection.
That's a great idea, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Very much.
Thanks for having us, we appreciate it.
Got it?
Um, we have a couple other.
All right, before we do that, you're more than welcome to stay, but you do not have to stay. All right?
Don't have to go home either. You don't have to go home either.
Thank you for that, thank you.
Thank you.
So we wanted to give you a couple status updates on pending items that will be coming to Historic Preservation Commission. So Matt, do you want to come up?
Yeah, sure. So let's point out a few items that will be coming our way this year. The first two on our list are roof installations, so 321 West Sixth Street, their roof was damaged during the parade show, so they reached out to us about replacing and installing a new roof. So that, we anticipate will be coming sometime this summer. And then we've received an application in 604 West Fifth Street, again, to install a new roof. This is an apartment building in the outer Historic District, just replacing asphalt, jingle with asphalt jingle. Number three on our list, 209 McFloodlin Boulevard. So this was just a project that we had sent to us yesterday, so we thought we would bring it up, try to get as much initial feedback as we can so that way we can relay that information back to the homeowner. So this building, it's a contributing structure in McFloodlin Heights Historic District, which is national. So normally we wouldn't review a national district. However, our ordinance is written in such a way that any demolition of a building, whether it's in whole or part, gets reviewed by this commission. So the building part that we received involved demolishing the screeded porch, which is highlighted in yellow. And then the applicant will be putting an addition on the building. So we're not gonna be reviewing the addition part, we're just reviewing by. So, we're not going to be reviewing the addition part, we're just reviewing whether or not it's appropriate to demolish the screen and porch. And based on the research that we've gathered just in the last day, we believe that the porch is not original to the home. And actually, if you look at this photo, this whole portion on the right side of the building was awesome addition. So I believe the original home is just the three peaks in the middle. So we're trying to help the homeowner out and just trying to gauge the pulse, I guess, of the commission and whether or not that porch has historic merit, should be saved, or if it could go in there. They can proceed with their project.
Yeah, so it's not, it's contributing to the district, but it is not an individual listed level of a building. So just to have that in your mind as well, we did that research. So we don't have a lot of information, because it doesn't have a full site inventory form. When it was listed in eighty-four, that screen and porch was there. Some initial research from the property owner thinks that...
She had blueprints from like nineteen twenty-ish and it wasn't there, so...
Yeah, so they were, yeah, I think the inventory sheet showed that this was, they think this was built in nineteen twenty-four. So it wasn't originally part of the house. It's, you know, it's basically a screen and porch. I can tell from the difference in the inventory sheet that, you know, windows have been replaced. It's, you know, asphalt shingled roof, I think, so.
Yeah, you got it. And then just the house with the pool, like, just over there a little bit, you know. Are you again okay for demolition?
Yes, so I think...
It's been kind of compromised already, that whole block. When that guy put that addition on with the pool, it was like, holy hell in the neighborhood. Because one, all of the runoff came down on McCollin and the entire neighborhood was pissed. It was just, oh, the house.
Yeah.
It's going to be pretty...
It will look really good when they do the addition.
Big.
It's going to be very big. It's about a fifteen-hundred-square-foot addition.
Yeah.
It's, it will basically even out what the addition, so this is, this is about twenty-six foot wide and they're proposing, I think it's about thirty over here, so.
It looks like it doesn't belong there now, like it looks like it's just like...
It's just in front of the building a little bit right now.
Well, this is like the roof shapes and with that front beam, it just doesn't look, it looks odd.
Yeah, so looking through our ordinance, which I'm going to propose that we don't do a deep dive tonight on the ordinance, we'll come back in June. Do that, just read it, do some homework. But the demolition criteria lists some things, but it's a kind of up-to-step discretion on what's normally required. This is just a partial demolition of a screen and porch, not the original structure. We just wanted a little bit of feedback to make sure that we weren't asking for enough information from the homeowner as part of it. So if there's...
Is there anyone from the commission that has any questions on this? I mean, they're going to have any, they're going to follow each other.
I just have a question, when was that out, will you tell me?
Nineteen twenty-four.
And you said the screen porch, we have blueprints for when?
Of nineteen twenty, so I think that they're original blueprints, and it does not show the porch on it.
Oh, okay, that's what I was, that's it.
Anything else?
Okay, so we'll try to gather as much information on the property as we can and then have that come at the Judy meeting. Just so everyone knows, the Preserve Iowa Summit's coming up, it is virtual, I believe it's June third through the fifth. So we'll send out an email, and the city has in their budget, so they'll cover the registration fee. Bob, did you want to do that too?
What's that?
Do you want to do the Preserve Iowa Summit or not? Because the city will pay that...
When is it?
June third to the fifth, I think.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about it, we'll figure something out.
It's virtual and the sessions are recorded, so you can go back and watch it at any time.
Yeah, okay, so we'll get the registration fees, we'll register everybody. We just wanted to make sure we've heard from everybody to make sure whether they wanted to attend or not. And then we can talk about it after, afterwards, well.
And we'll send out more information as it approaches. And then last but not least...
Tomorrow, it's the city council will put the Historic Preservation Month proclamation that will be at the city council meeting. I can accept the proclamation on the commission's behalf, I'll be there anyway, but if somebody from the commission wants to accept the proclamation from the city, I am more than willing to step aside and let somebody else accept it on the commission's behalf.
Would anybody from the commission like to go down to the council meeting and have your picture taken with the mayor?
Tomorrow night at five-thirty.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the city council meeting starts at five-thirty tomorrow.
I might be there, but you can accept it.
If you're going to be there.
I don't know if I will for sure, so I mean, I guess if I'm there, I mean, I won't know until tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, and generally speaking, if you want, you can, if you don't want to, that's totally fine. I would just say something about thanking the city council for supporting historic preservation and recognizing its importance to the community.
Unless we want to hit them up for money.
I will not do that.
Then you always do that publicly. Shame them.
Yeah, so that's all we have, other than training, which as I said, I'm going to propose, we don't. I would suggest what we're, Matt, put together some slides on it, we can send out the, we can send out the individual slides, but...
George? Yes, sir.
We will PDF the ordinance, it was attached to the agenda in the packet, but we'll give you the actual ordinance, read through it. I think we might have a pretty productive work session in June, if you read through it, and then ask specific questions about what stuff needs. And then use Matt's PowerPoint to kind of help explain how it's set up. We recognize that this ordinance is not in the best shape.
That's right, we did it really hard, we don't know a lot about.
There had been a couple of attempts to start to revise it and get it to the city council for approval. Then Ryan Hosneck, who was the city staff before us, left for another position in a different city. So, once we get everybody up to speed on what's existing, we can start talking about how we want to change it, but we don't feel like it's time yet, until you guys have a little bit more background on what the actual ordinance as it stands is. And then, I kind of want to go into the Department of Interior Standards on what's recommended when you're doing federally funded projects and what they will get for criteria buildings, so that you guys have a better idea before we start diving in and changing things.
Thank you, sir.
But we do fully recognize that there will need to be some changes to it. So, take a peek at it and we can come back in June and do a deep dive on the ordinance.
All righty.
Thank you guys for your time, it was a long one.
Thank you.
It's a busy...
It has been.
Yeah, all right. Does anybody have any questions before we post the work session? Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Hopefully, next time we can all meet together.
That would be great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I would normally shame the council with money and that kind of thing, but, you know, it's an election year.
They're not going to.
And I don't want to, why put them in a, why make them mad?
I want to make them mad, yeah, so.
Yeah, no, that's funny. Well, you should. All right, thank you, guys, have a good night.
Appreciate it, thanks, Jake.